But when other guy lost it that owned it, the new guys had to come and get another one.
He lost it? I don't, I heard them talking last night, but I didn't know what it was about.
He was serving out of a bar, out of the bar, which was a knot on the beer and wine deal.
Oh. Really?
And he was supposed to know that's what.
Well, that's a good way to get caught.
Yeah.
So you weren't supposed to serve the bar, you can only go to your table?
You can get it at the table.
The waiter goes to the table, but you can't go up to the bar.
Ah, that's not bar.
Barely up to the bar.
It's only supposed to be served during the time that they're cooking.
While they're eating.
Yeah. For the beer and wine deal. I just remembered those and I was like, what were these glasses? I had to read a bottle on them and I'm like, it's getting ugly.
I mean, they didn't seem like if those things met up, they didn't seem like they were not there.
The only one that didn't reply to me today was lying. The only one that didn't reply was he lying today.
Hey, I actually found it.
I'm gonna find it first. Did check remember?
I thought he did. Hey man.
Check will be here, Joe will be. So the only one that told him where is he lying?
Joel. How's it going? Good, right? Good, doing alright. How are you?
Good?
Good to see you.
Waiting for a text from Rebecca. See what kind of school text you got today.
We just locked any one of these. He won't be here.
Great. Here, use my pink pen and put your own number on there for her.
Mr. Robinson.
Yeah.
The movie that you were gonna make me, what is it? Is it like a DVD or something?
Yeah, it's a DVD. It's the, it's the, um.
I thought you, if you wanted to do it for me, because I don't have a DVD player.
That, that's kinda killing, doesn't it? You young whipper, you're lucky I didn't bring you on an eight track tape.
That's the, don't have that.
Yeah.
Hey, you know what's funny? We had to buy a little mini DVD player to watch, to show our girls our wedding video. We're like, hey, we wanna see y'all's wedding. We said, oh, we got a DVD. Then we were like.
Oh, we have DVD.
So we had to order one on Amazon, it's like this little.
My dad comes in to have dinner with me and he's, oh, I brought a DVD so we can watch a movie too. And I'm like, oh, I don't have a DVD player. Like, but my movie is streaming.
I can go, I can go DVD to VCR and VCR to DVD. I can own it that way. Just in case.
Huh? Can you record from VCR to DVD?
And the voice led with all the games.
No.
No, it's, uh.
You can put a DVD in that.
I don't know, I have to look at it, but I got one.
I have a VHS.
I think he does a player for both of them. Um, I think what we did was, we had to go to Lovick and there was a guy that would take your VHS tapes and put them on a DVD. But I think you could do it if you could copy the VHS to a flash drive or to the hard drive and then back again.
I thought Elaine said she'd be here.
Well, she didn't respond to the texts, I don't know.
She responded when Isma sent out the meeting minutes.
Oh, she did.
Oh, that's right.
Yeah, she responded.
We'll have, uh.
But, yeah. She slept.
I don't know, Check is supposed to be here. Look, you found his old, an old camera.
Yeah, it's a film camera.
He really uses it.
It's nothing new to me, I got video. Does he have pictures in it?
That's cool.
Yes, he takes pictures.
This is, this is the very same camera my father purchased. But, no, he got lots he good years out of.
On, uh, on Monday, I got to go to Augusta.
Oh, you did?
You can't take your phones in there.
But you can take a camera.
They let you take a camera. So same thing, we pulled up Amazon, bought a cheap digital camera. Just like, we don't have a camera.
Without your phone, we don't.
Yeah, exactly.
So you got.
I have one.
You saw it on the upstairs.
Well, mine's probably better.
I went to the practice round on Monday.
I have all the different.
But we were only in there till eleven and it rained and the weather storm came to kick us out. So we got in by the time we parked and got in, it was eight thirty. We'd have been in there three hours.
I developed my own film.
It was an experience.
I didn't know how I used to do that still.
It was raining the whole time.
Well, that's why you have that red light.
They had the evacuators.
Jason should go to. Jason wants to go to the Masters, Michelle wants to go there one day, where the women compete. Where she could be women, she wants to go back to and see that.
Yeah, I've, I've been applying for those tickets for ten years maybe. And every year you get an email, your application was not accepted. This year, I got an email, your application was accepted.
They just wanna find out if you're tenacious enough.
I guess.
You know?
I guess.
Three's not the lucky charm, ten is, when you're talking about the Masters.
Well, it's cool though, I mean, like I said, it was short lived, but I got to see.
Well, did you watch the, the shootout or whatever it was at the end with, uh?
Yeah.
McElroy.
McElroy, I was.
It's crazy, that's my favorite golfer, so.
Oh, he is?
See, I just, I just needed to bless the ground, the grounds and the dust up first, boy, see? I just needed, I just needed to have my presence.
Yeah, well, you could have brought back some of that rain you saw.
I know, man, it, it stopped.
Oh, really?
Alright, well, we have quorum, so it's up to you. If you're ready to start, if you want to give them a few.
Cause Check said he'd be here, I'll give him a minute, a few more minutes. Cause I know he's not gonna be here. Was out there in Reduson playing and when I said that, it's, it's terrible. It's just green and green. It is brown.
Where's that?
In Reduson.
Oh, yeah, I saw a picture just a minute ago.
And he's like, how you supposed to play in?
Is that at the inn or?
They're playing at.
Yeah, the links.
Yeah, my, my, my little nephew's playing there.
That was pretty tore up from the floods, huh?
Floods and buyers.
Yeah, my little cousin sent me this picture of.
Yeah.
Oh, man.
The horses were nice and they came, came right up to you.
But yeah, look how brown they got.
It's rough.
Yeah.
They just like, can't get dirt.
Hope they're not charging full price for them.
Yeah, they are.
That's a high school tournament, but yeah, you know they are.
Mm-hmm.
Even the inn, they said the inn is rundown too.
And then because of the damages under the rocks over there, they're gonna apply it immediately.
Oh, really? I like that course. That was pretty, yeah, they'll like me. Maybe it's gettable.
So we're gonna get started?
Yep.
I call this meeting to order the planning and zoning. And do road call Shannon?
Sure.
You mean for Ray Austin?
Yeah, I'm here.
Sheriff Price?
Here.
New River Land?
Here.
New River People?
Here.
New River Boat cannot be present. VEO will not be present. And your council, not present.
Uh, consideration of the minutes, has everybody got to read them?
Yes, I have.
I just count them real quick.
Need to approve the agenda.
Oh, yeah. Need a motion to approve the agenda?
I'll make them.
Okay, I'll second.
Okay, well, yes, motion. Second to your browser. There we go. All approved?
Yes.
Yes, yes.
Yes.
Now I'll make a motion to approve the minutes from our last meeting in January.
I'll second.
No, was it February? It's February.
February, sorry.
Yeah.
I'll second.
No motion? Right?
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Commissioner and Stafford Board?
Um, I don't have anything, um, unless you guys want an update on projects going on. I updated commission. Main Street is open, there'll be temporary closures here and there for striking. Little bit sidewalk work left, um, little bit electrical work left. And of course, they'll get the lights flashing. Um, well, they are already flashing at Central and Washington. Um, the Jackson light, or the Jefferson light is not, not powered up by Lee County Electric yet, so they can't get that one going yet. Um, Avenue D, of course, they have to wait, um, to do a little bit more. Um, they were gonna do some demo and some, remove some of the mask arms, the smaller pen, pen points, which is the hand where you push the cross button for the handicap, right? Cause two of those got knocked out. Cause they're just in the way. They're too close to the curb.
I don't see that.
So the state redesigned that, so that's when, at the end of paving, they were gonna jump back and, and fix those things in that area, then they can activate those lights. Um, any of DOT is gonna be here next week to do a walkthrough, uh, for punchless ions. Uh, I'll be attending that with them. I know I have several issues with some of the stamped concrete by the library. Uh, if we're on the courthouse, it looks a lot better and of course, if we're on the other side of Main, it looks a lot better. But of course, the library is where they first started, so it kind of, kind of, they needed to get the hang of it, I guess, but there's some areas that look pretty bad. That I'm not happy with and I've had several complaints from citizens in that certain area, so. Then we started, uh, the Jefferson, our Jackson project, the widening of the road. Uh, we're tearing out, they gotta pave from seventeenth to nineteenth, cause that's all we were doing was a few patches on the ADA sidewalks in that area and repaving the road. So that part, besides the sidewalk work is done, so they're tearing out between eleventh and thirteenth now, um, from the curb, for the new curb line, which is gonna be pushed back to make that area wider. So, yeah, you live down there, if you drive by ninth, you can see all the way down, because all the trees are going out of the easement.
How wide are they gonna make that road?
It'll be the same width as it is from thirteen to seventeen. Yep. Widen it up, put some sidewalks out. You know, have leave room for, uh, street lines and mailboxes there and a little space between the sidewalk and the back of the curb.
I don't go down that road, I just go to Pro, go to. I just do the circle of town.
It will be narrower than it is from ninth to Main Street then still, or is it gonna be the same width all the way down?
Um, it'll be a little narrower than there, cause that's really wide through there.
Mm-hmm.
Um, but we just, we didn't put new curb, new gutter or nothing on that, cause it was already wide enough.
Mm-hmm. But we would have liked to have new curb and gutter.
I know, but that was, so the grant for that was written before I ever, before I knew, before I did this type of work, right, for the city. It used to be Wyatt and, and James that did it. And they wrote that grant just to do a building, so they didn't, they didn't write it to fix any sidewalks or any curbs and they should have. They should have put new sidewalks in it. With our ADA plan, we're supposed to actually put new sidewalks every time we do a major renovation on a street.
Mm-hmm.
Um, yeah, when you have, basically like anything, when you have substantial improvement, you gotta come up to code. Streets are the same way, the state feels the same way about that, so, um, they've gotten a lot stricter on those and so that's why people are like, well, why are you putting in sidewalks? We've never had sidewalks. I'm like, well, cause you have to nowadays. ADA compliance is a huge push.
Anytime you touch a street.
Yep.
Anymore, you have to go back with.
Kinda go back to ADA compliance. Yep, it's, it's pretty much, you know, they got away with it in the past, but it's not something you can do anymore. But, you know, it makes the cost of your projects go up, so I can littler sections at a time. But still getting things done, so hopefully moving on. I don't have too many people mad, we've only got one carport that's gotta come down.
She started on Jeff, uh.
It's gonna look a lot nicer though.
It is.
We're, we're going in the right direction.
Yeah.
Yeah, and that's what I told, the mayor was like, well, what, can we just go around that carport? Cause then you're gonna go around everyone we ever do in town, cause you're setting a precedence right there. He said, you cannot do that. Um, I said, do you, you know, this is growing pains. We gotta grow and move in the right direction.
Yep.
And people who built illegally in the easement, it's time to pay the library, right?
Yep.
So what are they doing on Brian Urlacher and Nineteenth on the corner there?
Uh, I don't know.
Where?
There's no plans for that. All that vacant land. Right now, I know they're just cleaning it up. They're tired of sticker, uh, the.
Mosquitos.
Windsocks on all the mosquito tree, you know, the plastic bags. They're tired of all those, uh, so they're, they're cleaning it up. And I know it's causing a lot of dust and dirt in that area. But, you know.
It had a bit more.
We live in a dust and dirt world, so.
We had the dirt before, the mosquitoes was not holding it down.
Yeah, Albertson's is moving along well. Uh, the project to the south of it with the entrance, they're starting utilities, actually, for Marison Sons will be starting utilities in about a week or two. And, uh, soon as they get the utilities in that area, they'll start the pavement and then they'll do that access road. Uh, so again, Main Street will have a few little shifts and detours to get around their work when we do the access road there. And they'll take out that free ride at the hospital, that'll be gone and.
We're gonna try to get as much done.
You'll have to go to the stop sign to get on Main, you can't take that free ride.
Right. We're gonna try to get as much done without having to disrupt any traffic.
Yeah.
So we're gonna do everything we can behind the curb first. That way, once we get into that decel lane, everything's ready to go. Albertson's will share.
And I know I've been working, yeah, I've been working with Miranda to do a truck ordinance to keep the large semis off of Main Street. From, from basically geared rough to Avenue Inn. And we did Avenue Inn because of all the truck stop.
Good.
That way they can get Avenue Inn, they can go in there, get gas, turn right back around, go to R, go over to Commercial that way or go, or lack or the other way around.
That'll be good. We don't, we don't tearing up that new road.
Yeah, we don't want them tearing up that brand new road. Cause I don't wanna be repaving it in another ten years. When it took three years to get it done.
I didn't say that.
And actually, the state. The state says that road's gonna last for about, you know, twenty, thirty years, so.
Yeah, you better agree, mom.
Before then, we're, we're S O L. So we gotta protect it as much as possible.
Well, the highway between Hobbs and, and Lovington, it, it didn't last twenty years.
I know. None, none of them do. I don't know.
So why would you make, why would you stipulate something that's an impossibility?
Well, because that's their funds. You know how many roads they have to take care of?
Keep the big trucks off of it, it might.
Yep, if you keep the big trucks off of it, it might last up. So that's what we're working here, keep them off of it. Alright, anything else for me? That's all the reports I have.
Any more questions?
Nope.
Okay, we'll go to public comment. Has anyone got anything to comment that's not on the agenda?
They're both on the agenda.
Okay.
Forget it. Alright, I'll make a motion.
Some non-action items.
Oh, dude, put that on the list.
Yeah, I'm in the, I'm in the process of hiring a new coordinator. I did get changed, my title has been changed to Funding and Zoning Administrator. And, um, do we want to start saying the pledge when we do our, our meeting?
I'm always for that.
You're always for that?
That's fine.
Okay. I, I noticed it's always on the sheet, but we never do it. And that's why I'm like, you know, I think we just need to bring that back to getting that to a shoot. Okay, we, we won't. That's being, we'll, we'll start. I'll add those in fire report.
And they can do the invocation.
Hey, it's supposed to rotate each one. Yeah, but it'd be like.
We just volunteered for him.
Just Bing Scott, the last guy, he's like.
We just volunteered you. We've all told you.
Alright, we can go on to act on our agenda.
Okay, I'll make a motion that we revisit the variance request for three oh four West Avenue O carport, no front setback.
Okay, so this, uh, carport was built, um, a couple of years ago. Um, just, the files got tossed back. I knew it was built without a permit, but just the file got lost and it, it went out of my brain and then it come up again the other day and I was like, oh, cause they was filling something in the back and I'm like, oh yeah, you need a variance for the front. So, um, this carport was, like I said, it was built a couple of years ago. She did not have engineering or a permit when she built it. She had family members come in and help her over the weekend build it. So, uh, what I've told her she's gotta do is get this variance with the condition that she will get that engineering done and get the state permit pulled to make sure it is a viable structure. Um, it, it, um, the front area she does use for porch, which I did give those pictures out, and she does use a little over ten foot of it. She has a whole like picnic area up front there. So that makes it to where that first ten foot you're allowed to have as porch. And so the rest is carport, so that does not make it over the size limit for a carport, cause it's a dual purpose. So the use under it is carport and, um.
Porch.
So only thing she needs is the zero setback from the sidewalk, which is, uh, the property in her area of town. Uh, but also the sidewalk is a good, I don't have the measurements here, I think it's like sixteen or eighteen feet from the back of the curb. Um, did you have any other questions on it for me?
Did you say there was something, something to be built in the backyard?
Uh, a little storage shed. Which they did, they got their state permits on that and everything, got that taken care of. Oh, it's twenty-three foot from the sidewalk to the back of the curb. So there's ample room. Um, and, and that's like this, so, you know, with me always saying I'm not gonna expand that wide, using the whole part of Jackson that I used, it's a sixty-foot easement. This is an eighty-foot easement.
Wow.
And I'm not ever gonna make a rent of, a regular street use that whole eighty-foot easement. We would probably leave the sidewalks where they are to associate where that property line is. And really, this, the street in this area is not that narrow. It's a pretty decent road. It doesn't have a lot of issues in that area, so. A, a huge widening of eighty foot I never see happening in this area. And if it does, she is behind the sidewalk and so.
So the front yard setback is twenty-five?
Yeah.
And she has twenty-three?
Mm-hmm.
And that's the only thing, other than the size of it, that's, so the, the actual variance is for?
Zeroes on the front setback.
Okay.
Zero on the front setback, that's all we need.
Okay.
And she did say it would probably take her about six months to get enough money to get the engineering. She has called on some prices and realizes that's gonna cost her.
Yes, very.
Just give her, so she, she believes she can get that in six months and, and go ahead, cause it's not gonna take us, once she gets that, we can get that permit submitted and have an inspector come out and it'll be done and over with a week after she has the engineering, you know, so.
Okay.
The timeframe, that's not hard to do, it's just the cost of getting that engineering done. And then allowing the engineer time to do it.
That was gonna have to be done regardless, whether she did it before or after.
Correct.
So that's part of it.
Yeah, yeah, that's part of the conditions in the variance, that if she doesn't go through with that, within, and we'll, we'll give her the six months that she's saying it's gonna take her. She doesn't do that within six months, then we tell her, well, now you gotta take carport down. Now it's not valid.
Right. Okay. Does she need the variance in order to get the engineering drawings done?
No.
No, you had to get the, all that done before.
No, but.
Okay.
Why pay that much for engineering if we don't know if the city commission's gonna grant a variance?
Exactly.
That's why we do the condition variance.
Yeah.
Because that way, you know, you go spend all this money and the city, city commissioner, you guys will say, no, we're, we're not gonna give you the variance. She spent a ton of money and she's gotta demo it anyways.
Okay, so I just.
Or have it re-engineered to meet setbacks. That's a lot, so that's why.
That was my question, I didn't know.
Well, that's why I've been going through this process with the conditional variance, uh, cause it's not full-fledged, accepted until she has that done.
Anybody else? I'm good.
And the owners are here, if you have any questions for me.
Got any questions?
I'm good.
I'll accept your motion.
I'll make a motion to, uh
She understood everything? She does speak a little English, but
This is for
Uh, yes, this
I mean, as long as she understands the, the requirements.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah. And she said, she said she's already, that's what she's already trying to do.
Good.
I've been, I've explained it well, and I've had people translate it, so.
And she understands that we're only giving the request to the city commission?
She tells me the city commission. Oh, okay. The twenty-eighth. Cause she was here last month, but we didn't have quorum, so her card that I gave her, that had the date, is the wrong date, so, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, just as long as she understands that, we're just giving our recommendation to the commission.
Yeah.
And with that, I'll make a motion to, uh, give the variance request to the commission for three oh four West Avenue O, carport, no front setback.
For approval of it?
Correct.
I'll second.
All those in paper? Aye. All those opposed?
Alright, I'll make a motion that we revisit the action item, zone change request, three hundred block, East Avenue K, tract one E.
Okay, so this is a very large tract alone, uh, of land, south on, um, Avenue K, just on the south side of Avenue K, before you get to the railroad track. In fact, all the easement beside it is old railroad easement, which of course is bought, got up. I think this piece right here belongs to the warehouses still, uh, cause he bought up most of that along the railroad track. Um, that active, the trains have not been active there in a long time, but he, he wants trains to come back in, cause he used to did, he did make money off storage off of freight.
Yeah.
Um, he was very upset when they quit coming in, um, so, um, but that's where the industrial zone begins, it's right there at those, at that railroad track easement. So they are adjacent to the actual industrial zone already in, in the city. I know there's those houses there just past the railroad track, but what it was, was they wanted housing to quit going in that area for industrial zones. So those houses are allowed to remain as long as they're there. They will get burnt, destroyed by fire, and we're gonna have to find a new place to live, cause we're not supposed to build more houses out there. Um, so, just, uh, making this into an industrial zone, cause what he's wanting to do is, uh, he wants to build his trucking yard there. Um, he owns a trucking company, uh, him and a partner, and, uh, they already started clearing out the lot, it looks way better than it did. It's been a junkyard for forever, just storage of all kinds of crap, so, um, I know I've seen him out there, uh, getting rid of mosquitos, cleaning up the stuff. Um, he has said, um, in his letter, I know he stated, uh, he's gonna make his drivers go to Commercial, uh, to exit and to come in to the yard. Uh, so that will help with, uh, keeping trucks off Main. Uh, they're, they're very adamant about helping us really, I, you know. Uh, they want to help Lovington, so they wanna do things the right way. Uh, and we're having so many problems, this is a commercial zone. But that's where, and I wish code enforcement, cause she doesn't want any new trucking going into commercial zone. Cause what she wants to do is try to get the, cause we have so much mixed use in Commercial. You have homes, you have businesses, uh, but the, but the trucking is just one, something that just doesn't mix well with those things. So that's where code enforcement is trying to get more of the trucking to move towards industrial properties. And, um, that's where we wanna, you know, change the zone and just make it to where it's something
It's industrial?
So he can do that there, and it's, that way if we ever do zone out trucks from Commercial, he's not losing his property.
So how much of the property, he, um
Huh?
How much of the property, is it all that in yellow?
All that in yellow, and then the blackout line would be what we would change to, uh, green. Which, right to the south side of it, that is the natural drainage ditch for the Main Street, uh, drainage, storage and system.
Mm-hmm.
That goes out to Avenue R. Um, and of course, he's, north is just the Avenue K with businesses along there, and you have the cement place just north of him there. Cause the cement place will probably end up doing the same thing.
Yeah.
Is probably end up changing it to
To industrial?
Industrial zone, yes.
Where's the cement place at?
It's right north of that.
Yeah, just
North of
A little bit.
Across Avenue K from where this is.
It's on, I, and it
Yeah, so when you look at it east, this, this starts part of that property that goes up into the cement plant right there.
Mm-hmm.
Or the gravel yard, or whatever you wanna call it, whatever they sell now.
What's this south, south of it, that, it looks like the bottom part of an arrow? The sliding part? Is that, is that a, is that a road, or is that just where the land?
No, that, right south of it, where it goes down, that is where
The railroad tracks are.
Are you talking about this right here?
Yes.
So that's the drainage ditch that comes across and goes into the warehouses, and then goes over to, uh, Commercial Street.
So south of that is Crane?
Yes.
Okay.
South of that is Crane, you have that old Valar
Yep.
Uh, RV park back in here.
Okay.
Yeah, tractor spot right in here, yeah.
Okay.
And we're right down at the southern end of town, so.
So is the tip of that, right there, is that on Love Street?
Yes.
Correct.
Behind Love Street.
Yeah.
Okay, so Love Street is, Love Street's here. Oh, no, this is Main, this is Love.
That's Love Street right there.
This is Love.
It's like the alley of Love Street.
Yeah, so actually, this is only an alley, these homes should've never been allowed to be back there, because there's no actual emergency access to them. Uh, those were there before, and I know they wanted to put another one here, and I wouldn't allow it. I said, "Unless you wanna put in a road to get to that house and buy some property."
Back before, back before Lovington didn't have a, a planning and zoning board?
That's right, yeah.
So if we make
Back before they
You don't need to make all of this industrial
Yes, this yellow here.
So what keeps somebody from bringing trucks on the Love Street right there?
Huh?
What keeps somebody from?
Well, because right here's our drainage ditch, they really couldn't get onto it from right here.
They can't actually.
Yeah, they really can't, the way, when you're actually out on site, you really can't get truck through there, cause of our drainage ditch.
So everything in yellow is what you guys own?
Yeah.
Yes, sir.
Okay. And we're changing everything in?
In yellow to a green.
Okay.
Yeah, that'd be it. Yeah, cause that's
So what's the purple?
The purple is actually blue, that's Commercial, that's what the zone is right now. You have your, uh, this is where Main Street is, and it goes to the alley.
Uh-huh.
This is your economic zone. Then you have your Commercial Zone on Love, over to, uh, right away of the railroad track, which is now, belongs to the warehouses, but then it's industrial from there.
Okay.
I was thinking all that back there where the, the warehouses, it's all
All warehouses and everything.
So it wouldn't hurt bringing it up a little closer?
Where the sheriff's station and all that is on Commercial, it's all industrial.
So it wouldn't hurt at all to bring that up into it?
No.
To make it industrial?
No, it wouldn't. It actually just helped that area.
Yeah, it helped a lot.
We need, we need development, but, you know, uh, they need a place to have, run their business, they wanna do it the right way.
Yep.
Aye, that's a plus.
Clean up the lot, build a fence.
That's a plus.
Secure their trucks, have their drivers park there at night instead of in the residential areas where their drivers live. Um, that way their trucks are parked there, they bring their regular vehicle to come get their truck every morning, or every night, or whatever shift they're running. Keeps the trucks out of our residential
Is there anything you guys wanted to say?
So, yeah, the main thing is just to build a home.
You wanna come up?
Come on up and introduce the history.
I'm Trey Marison, co-owner, I have pristine energy, he's Juan Luis, my partner. Uh, so the main reason is to build a home, uh, do it the right way, I mean, you see everybody parking their semis at the All Subs and the Mavericks and stuff, and I'm trying to prevent that, honestly, you know? The main, the main goal is to have somewhere to designate people and have it there, and so that's the whole purpose of, of getting this done, you know?
When you say home, you mean like a home office?
It's gonna be an office, it's gonna be a yard, it's gonna be
It's gonna be a home for trucks?
House, cause homes aren't allowed in the
It's a, it's a home for trucks.
That's, that's, correct.
You're talking about the entire yard office?
Yes, correct, correct.
So, so this is like, uh, like a parking garage for trucks? This is where you, anybody can park their
No, it's just
Like a buyer's truck, or just your company? Okay, alright, I, I just wanted to make sure, I was gonna say
No.
Alright.
So right now, you know, his, his employees have to take their trucks somewhere else to park them, and that's where he's
We'd like you to take it back home to you.
Trying to find
Home to you, your yard.
To park at.
Yeah.
Renting spaces for other people to park at, you know? And it's just, it's hectic, so he's trying to make a place where all his trucks could
I think that's a really good idea.
Yeah.
Yeah. I'm going with it.
And right now, I mean, it's literally, like, it's been a junkyard, I mean
Literally, it has been.
Twenty years or twenty-plus years, so
Yeah, they're doing a lot of cleaning.
We've already cleaned up a lot of it, I mean, you guys can buy that and check it out, but we, we started a cleanup process on it already, so.
Well, I know Trey, I know he'll take care of it, I know it'll be nice, uh, and it's got quick and easy access to Commercial.
Mm-hmm.
If you're gonna be pushing your truckers to go that route, I mean, I'm for it.
And we're trying to get the curb cut permit for K to have, there's no entrance right now, really, I mean, it's really the only entrance off of that little alleyway to Love, that's the only way.
Oh, okay.
We can't even get a truck in there right now.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, just gotta get curb cuts and everything else.
That goes to us, doesn't it?
Well, you guys are doing it the right way.
They are?
Yeah, for sure.
I assume so.
I commend that.
Yeah.
Absolutely.
Yep.
Do you have to vote on the curb cuts? Can we cut?
No.
No. See, he goes to get the permit for our
No, I'll take care of all that.
Well, if there's nothing else, I'll make a motion.
Alright, go for it.
I'll make a motion to approve the zone change request for three hundred block, East Avenue K, for tract one E.
I'll second.
All those in paper? Aye. All those opposed? We're good.
Okay, we'll see you at the planning, at the city commission meeting on the twenty-eighth at five thirty.
Thank you, guys.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks for coming, guys.
Yes, sir.
Good luck to you.
Thank you.
We'll see you. So on the curb cuts, does that have to go through us?
Yeah.
No.
Just goes through our office.
So. Once everything's
I just give the specs and how to do it.
Take their money?
Do the inspections on it.
Anything else?
Before we adjourn, uh, or I guess we can adjourn, I was just gonna ask some questions about that thing in Taos.
Well, we, uh, okay, the, the conference.
The conference, yeah.
Okay.
You and I talked the other day, I bet you could just
Yeah, so it's the, uh, it's the Commissioner, uh, Planning and Zoning, uh, Conference. Um, in New Mexico Municipal
And it's what dates, I don't remember.
Like the one we went to in Albuquerque?
One before, yes.
The one like we went to in Albuquerque?
Yes, you went to one before.
So is it annual?
Uh, they do the Commissioner training every two years. Those conferences, they hold it for, uh, like code enforcement people, planning people, zoning officials. They'll hold that, we have them twice a year for workshops for our type of work. Um, every two years, they throw in a Commissioner training for City Commissioners, Planning and Zoning Boards or Commissioners. Just to help you guys understand
What day was it?
How things are supposed to be done.
May twenty-first, I believe.
Yep.
May something, it's the week before Memorial Day weekend.
I know, it's the same week that I gotta go to New Orleans for my floodplain training, so I
Well, it's appropriate you go to Flor- or to
New Orleans?
A shop for flooding.
For flooding, yeah.
Yeah.
They got lots showed me on Twitter, right?
That's right.
They've got lots of lessons learned.
I mean, that's, they, they did that on purpose.
How do we instate?
When you gotta look up to see the ocean?
Well, yeah, I, I'm interested in, in attending, uh
Okay.
So, in, I only have to go to that one day, right, with the
Yeah, the, the Commissioner training is usually just one day launch.
Okay.
They shouldn't have an agenda for the three
On my schedule.
Yeah. It's New, New Mexico Municipal League. Here's the website.
Yeah, I've got the email.
Yeah, I sent, I sent everybody an email, cause I'll get it.
I got it.
Got it.
Uh, and that shows you the website to go to, to look for it.
And then I just, uh, register there?
Mm-hmm. Yeah, you register there, um, and then, of course, that tells you, uh, if you go there, you can find out where the hotel is, you can try to stay close, or at the conference hotel is usually the best. Uh, cause otherwise it's, you're traveling to try to get in and out there, it's always best to try to stay at the conference hotel.
Yeah, exactly. New Mexico League of Zoning Officials.
Yeah, so it's under the New Mexico Municipal League, under the subsection of zoning officials. And here it is, I found it. Let's see. So
Planning and zoning meetings out here?
Yeah.
The, um, May twenty-first through Friday, uh, Wednesday, May twenty-first through Friday, May twenty-third. Uh, League of Zoning Officials Semi-A annual meeting. See if they have their program up.
The Saint Rush Inn.
Preliminary program, okay, so, yep, Saint Rush Inn is your hotel.
And the first day is the zoning?
Yeah, so the Wednesday is Land Use Officials Training, uh, and that is for Commission members and their responsibilities, serving on Commissioners. Uh, the guys that teach that are all really, really good, uh, some of them are attorneys and stuff, and
And is that all day?
Um, maybe, that's what I'm trying to figure out. I know the other one, coordinating government body, that goes till noon. Lunch. Um, I'll find out for sure, cause then it goes into other things, so, I really think it's just that first morning. Uh, of course, you can stay for the full conference, if you wanna hear any and all of it, cause there's a lot of good things that go through, you know?
Right.
What different zoning regulations are, and how to approach different things. Um, it's all, it's always good information.
Okay.